So did you get sworn in this morning?
Pardon?
Did you get sworn in this morning?
Sworn in.
Or did you, was there like a little thing?
No.
No?
Not for Chairman, no.
Oh, okay.
That's just a vote of themselves.
Okay.
He's like, "Why are you swearing at me?" "What did I do?"
I'm sure some of them swore in this morning.
Actually, Marvin swore in. I think he didn't.
My thoughts were this morning. That sounds about right.
Quit drinking those drinks, those are not good for you.
Amen.
I'm not going to sit here with a mask on, I tell you so.
I did that for you guys as protection, not for mine.
I didn't want you guys to feel uncomfortable.
All in favor? Yes, let's contact the OHSU extension.
Well, over here, you know, after the budget comes back from Oklahoma City, we always need to get a contract signed through the commissioners. So there's three copies, one for you guys when it comes back from Stillwater, one for them, and one for our office, so.
We need to sign these, you need to date them all back?
Yeah, on the back page, it'll have a place for you guys to sign. We'll get those sent to Stillwater, and they'll get them sent back to us. We can continue to keep going like we're going.
Let's see if there are some changes on the classes from OSU. If you are taking a virtual class, it's mandatory to have a camera and a microphone. Now, if you guys have that same one or not. Which is still nicer than having them.
I'll make a motion, we approve the conference. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, man.
Yes, sir.
You appreciate it, Tommy.
Keep you posted on the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. I figured we'd be hearing from him sometime. Been a while, so. Too good an organization to let it fall aside. We came a long ways for a year or two, and then that COVID hit, and we just kind of fell flat on our face. Just ain't done nothing, but there's a lot there, so good place to start.
Yeah.
Start again.
I'm gonna make a copy real quick, I want to get one back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, though. I love last week's well later.
I do, too.
Maybe you're gonna have trouble.
If you went and signed it first. All I gotta do is sign in the blanks wrong.
Sign where there's no signature. We can make arrows, it's no problem.
Now, a lot of these that you were signing, I gotta sign all them now, so.
As long as your, as long as your statement after the date that you become Chairman, then yeah.
I'll try to watch for that, you may have to catch me off you go.
He's good, though.
He is good, actually. Well, that's a little bit bifocused to see through.
I'm sure you have a lot of eyes.
Did you get?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I tried to wear the rags, but they make me sticky. So you used to wear these, and I tried to wear them right there.
Yeah. For a long time, it's all a war. I did great with them, but.
Yeah, you just had 652 pairs of them.
I did. Had one pair in every tractor, every pickup, every desk. They were cheap, though.
And then when I needed them, you'd give them to me. Now, he gonna be pretty fair.
No, look, they're gonna, and the fairground, she'll stay on those.
Just June.
Discounted, you know.
Hey, on the general government, it's only on the blank purse.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Give me a can of Lysol, I'm gonna be gosh, I'm gonna be brave.
I thought we had a can of Lysol in my house, but Lacy's allergic to, or their asthma is bothered by the aerosol. So I couldn't find a bottle of Lysol anyway, so I wiped everything down that I touched this morning before I left. Wiped the door off as I walked in the building. I guess there's several downstairs. I think that's the closet. I'm gonna pan those out. I'm looking for another one, sorry. I'm gonna let you catch up, we're just signing below Marvin. It's the Chairman.
And, and it's.
And it's a soldier's. That's someone else, so.
He got it. Sure did.
He must be doing better than me on that plate. I have like a one and a dash and a.
I know.
I make my two into a zero, and then a four, and then.
I don't know, we'll check down with them.
All in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in practice orders?
Okay, we have the blankets from Fairgrounds, Abolture Rescue, Jet Responders, Meskotunga Rescue, District Two, Sheriff of District One. Well, Mommy, she says that you are on Meskotunga in the jet. I thought Jay was. These aren't, don't need to be signed. Those are Abolture, and the Sheriff, and District One and District Two are already signed.
I thought I was on the.
I thought Jay was on Meskotunga, so she said part of us.
I'm pretty sure, huh? There's one here, the Gulfrey, doesn't have no signature on it. You say that one needed to be signed?
No, Lacy and Nancy are that one. Lacy signed it. I told her I'd make sure Lacy signed it. Put one hand.
I'll send the debt, all in favor? Aye.
Go across the permits. Apply for grant with no matching assistance for 911, costing our.
Sarah's been exposed also. She said she wasn't gonna come up to the meeting. There's no matching on this. It's 11,362, 73, 911 Management Authority, New Funding Substant- Substantiality Grant Program. You guys will sign up, that's what I just, down there on the date, that I just went through the meeting, that she's brought to the meeting before she applies for it.
11,362, 73.
All in second. Appropriations. All in favor?
Aye.
Appropriations.
Yeah, we changed it to Lacy and Marvin on Meskotunga, and the jet was Lacy and Marvin, we changed it. The rest of them are changed to Lacy and Nancy, other than Ally, and it's Marvin and Nancy.
I'll make a motion, we approve that. Appropriations, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, those are the highway expenditures.
I believe we've checked out my picture.
I'll save that, all in favor?
Aye.
Save it away on me, anyway. Sorry.
Don't forget that, we'll just back up and do the monthly officers report.
Inside direct.
Yeah, I'm trying to give her some time.
You guys just said it's time. I got a date, and it's, it's not nice enough to date her, or something.
There's three. There's one from the Sheriff, one from the Sussa, and one from the mechanic work.
Date this here.
I do. I can date it for the 20th, if you can date it, Mom.
I'll make a motion, it's.
Tag it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alcohol beverage tax.
It's a new form, but. It's in form, but not tax.
I believe we can.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Burn ban.
I think we need to stick with it for now. I actually Googled forestry services this week, because I was wondering, you know, we've had a little bit of moisture, but everybody west of I-35, except on both sides of West Woods County and Grant County don't have one yet, but pretty much everybody all the way to the Red River got burn bans.
I think we definitely need to give it...
I think, for now, until we get some kind of...
We leave.
Now...
I believe we can. Oh yeah.
We were marking the cutting and welding, grinding, extruders.
All those three button ones.
The three buttons?
Yeah.
Okay.
Extending the burn ban for two weeks.
14 days, I'll put this back on the agenda until 17.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to get it off, but ARP funds.
Jake asked me a long time ago to put this back on the agenda each time, and I kind of dropped the ball a couple times. I had sent over, I called Woods County to see who they had helped them write their reporting for the reduced in revenue, because our revenue has only went down like $5,000 in the past three years, but our sales taxes went down a lot. But on that spreadsheet that the auditors came up with on the reporting, there was no place to put it. So I called over there and they've had Paula, starts with an H.
Yeah, Paula from Guernsey.
Yeah, from Guernsey, that is who did their ACA, ARP reporting, so I have, like I said, I've left three messages with her. This kind of come over from, I got a thing from Grant County, also, I don't know whether they're using it, did you ever call them, Max?
I haven't talked to Max, I don't know who given her, but...
And maybe she just sent it out to Alphatack County and Grant County on that, I didn't go ahead and go back and look at that. But I did tell Mike on the phone earlier, when I was calling to ask the auditors another question, no, I called Calpro about having them set up the ARP account numbers that we had approved back in July, and they have a separate account for the interest, so if you guys want me to set that up, I will put that on the agenda for next week, and then we can just put that in there and you guys can use that.
We could start utilizing that interest money instead of having it in an account, but if we pull it out of that account, it's also going to knock the actual interest we gain every month down, because, so unless y'all are needing to use it, there's going to be a...
Girl, girl, man or two, girl.
I agree with that, and I think that, but we may want to set that account up or get ready to have it when you decide to use it, you could do that. But on the Guernsey deal, I know that they were using that, and they were pushing that kind of C D about using Guernsey, but we kind of talked about it first, about just sitting and waiting and being patient and deciding how to utilize this. I mean, we could talk to Guernsey and stuff, but I don't think we are too...
What they did, Mike, if you can prove you got a $400,000 shortfall and they're, they got a million ban, then it can be used as roads and bridges.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to prove, or we...
You can use it on, you can use it on anything. If you can show that you have a shortfall, you can use it on anything.
Anything.
Despite the interest.
We need to check into what the cost percent of guarantees is, what they're charging.
This was, again, this is what they, they sent to, to Woods County, is the project manager, manager is $150 an hour, the certified grant administrator is $115 an hour. I asked Shelley, she didn't know how much, she said, but she didn't think it took them very long at all, she was extremely busy, so she didn't go back to see what the check was on board, I mean, you guys can look at this, if you don't want to, it's the second to the last page, is there...
One of the deals there, I don't remember which one it was, they were two hours ago.
Yeah, I was saying, Shelley thought it wasn't very long, she said that she could go back and pull the P O, she was pretty sure that they had paid them, but like I said, she was extremely busy when she, when I called them, so...
It never hurts to ask questions, I just don't want to get into where they take a huge percentage of it for something that we could wait on and do in time, but if it would allow us to use it, that's, as long as it's affordable.
All they're waiting on over there is, is the AG Attorney General to sign the papers, and they can, that money will be released, they can use it how they want.
How long they been waiting, you know? I forgot to ask you about that.
That was two weeks ago, I was over, they might have got signed by now, I don't know, but they were waiting on it.
Which we've already designated at 10% of that money for the water.
If they get the grant.
Well, I think it's pretty well designated, 10%, isn't it, anyway?
No, they got...
I think...
From what I understand, they've got to get the grant, unfortunately that money and the grant.
Well, if they don't get the grant, that 10% ain't going to help.
All right.
Because that's quite a chunk of money.
Yeah.
But that's 10% of this, and they, when we had the meeting, they was talking 700 some thousand, we didn't know what happened.
No, we've only received the one payment.
We only got the first one.
I don't know if you noticed in the preparations, but she's finally putting that over into our side, and so, but that is just the first payment, and that's that first, so we should be, we should have received it at the end of November, because I said six months afterwards. They received that the very last day of May, but I asked her...
Well, they haven't gotten anything yet.
Yeah, I asked her last week, and so she's, she's looking for it on a regular basis, so...
I think we ought to check when anybody else around, and see if they...
I did ask Shelley when I had her on the phone, and they had not received theirs yet either, but...
If I visit Mike, I'll ask if the city's receiving anything.
I haven't called anybody else on that.
We don't need a motion on that.
No, it was just, like I said, I just, we just thought, and it was a good idea, I mean, just if there's something new or something, just leave it on the agenda each time, so and I said, I had just, I had wiped it off and hadn't had it out there.
Inventory, Alphatack County Court, record books, they're taking the Hutchison cases.
I just thought it ended us in the minutes, just in case, you know, 30 from years from now, if I'm not here anymore, that they want to know where these books were, that they would be in the minutes, this is the inventory, and it is agreed upon with the place in Hutchison, these are the books that are stored there. We did find that we missed, I think there's like eight books, that there was four on that roller rack down there, that I didn't pull the roller rack out any farther, I just seen those four on the bottom of it, and then I missed a stack of four in the mapping room, but again, someday we'll take those back up there. We have microfilm, that Bruce, when he recreated those books on the west wall, they put them on microfilm. I mean, again, we have the original books that went up there, if you want me to send that microfilm up there, I can. Again, we can't tell, some of them, the seal is broken on them, some of them have an inventory root on them, I don't know whether the other ones have something on them or not, so whatever you guys want me to do on that.
This is everything that he's taken at this point.
Yep, that's everything that we've taken to this point.
That was really not made for motion on this, is it?
No, I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted it in the minutes, that since way if somebody looked back to try to find out where they was at, that it would be somewhere in there.
More say, whether we know it's there or not.
Martin helps loads. He knows there's...
He didn't ride with you, he didn't...
All right, Fire Chief and Assistant Change for Mesketengue Response.
I received an email from Keith Adale, they normally send this through, if you guys don't want to take any action on it, it's up to you, she said they had a special board meeting, and during that meeting also appointed a new people for their following positions, it has Neil Metcalf for the Fire Chief, and Travis Prove, Assistant Fire Chief, and Chief Maintenance Officer.
I don't know that we need a motion on it, but I think we ought to agree that, I mean, I think that's what he's...
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
We didn't make a motion on it, then you guys didn't want to make a motion on it, because she said it wasn't up to you guys, so we didn't make a motion on it before they accepted.
Yes.
No, we got it backwards, no, no.
That was, they probably did that before.
I, yeah, I tried before. Do you want to make a motion on it, or not make a motion on it?
Fire dump, Charlie, you have to fire department.
Yeah, Fire Officer, it is.
Well, accepting the request is what it's stating.
I believe we can do it.
Yes. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Got him there.
Request to change court clerk, First Deputy from Kelsey to Lieutenant Miller?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant Miller?
I believe we can do it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reimbursement for CDL?
This comes to me as a request, we had refunded one of the District Three's employees when they took their permit, and then when they got their actual test, I did check with Dale, and he said, as long as it is a condition of their employment, that we can refund this, reimburse these, and so he said he'd just, he would, he suggested that we make it in a resolution form, so that's what it's stating, that it's, again, I still think we just need to have the ADA sign off on it, that way they're aware of it also, and we can always take them a copy of the resolution.
Well, I did request him and asked him to give a CDL, he had one.
And he's doing it for the benefit of the county.
And he's doing it for the benefit of the county, so I, I'll make a motion to reimburse.
All in favor?
Aye.
Request to remove Lisa from the proceeding officer, add Jennifer Hensley. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sick leave donation from Dusty Gaff to Ron Nickel for 11 hours.
I told Dusty when he called me that this would be up to you guys, because his employment has been terminated before, actually came to the meeting, but he did ask for it beforehand, so I said we would stick it through.
That is a waste.
No.
And it does not help him on his retirement, I mean, it's 11 hours, so we didn't make or break him on anything on his retirement.
If you want taking care of it.
If everybody was signing off the bottom, there's not a spot, just everybody, we always sign those at the very bottom.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proceeding business?
I believe we can.
I'll second.
Aye.